Good morning, welcome to Commissions Court, January thirteenth regular session. We have a full court in present, carry certified meeting was probably posted.
Yes, sir.
Feel please rise for prayer and pledges, James Drake.
Father, we humbly bow before you this morning. Thank you for your presence to be made known in this courtroom. If you may be God of these commissioners and a judge, for the decisions that they must make for the rest of this walk of town. Father, we love you and we thank you for all that you've done for us in this past year. And we look forward to your working with us in this new year. Father, a Bible verse that I woke up this morning and found in the first chapter twenty-nine, verses eleven to nineteen, it says, "Yours, Lord, is the greatness and the power and the glory and the majesty and the splendor; for everything in heaven and earth is yours. Yours, Lord, is the kingdom; you are exalted and treant head over all." Father, may we take that to heart, and we realize that you're in charge of everything, may we give you all the glory, in Jesus' name we pray.
Amen.
Father, we are the United States of America. And together we hold the purpose of this stand, one nation, under God, in this world, with liberty and justice for all. I'm not going to say anything, I'm just pleased to be here.
I didn't receive any citizens input. Uh, consent agenda contains eighteen items.
You mean nothing, I'll make the motion to approve the consent.
Yeah, I'm pulling sixteen.
Pulling number sixteen.
Oh, you got jumpy on me.
I did. You're late.
Moving second in all favor raise your hand, motion carries, number sixteen approved, transfer of computers and laptops from CCL to two seventy-eight.
Well, these two, uh, as long as Judge Gaines, our new judge, is up with it, I don't really have a problem, has anybody talked to him?
I talked to both of them, they were all good with it.
As long as they didn't have an issue with it.
No, that, that was their choice.
Alright, I'll make a motion to approve sixteen or seventeen.
Wait, sixteen and seventeen?
Yep.
Okay, we didn't pull sixteen.
We did, we pulled sixteen and seventeen.
Oh, sorry.
And I got a motion to approve sixteen and seventeen and a second.
Two separate ones though.
Okay, we'll do.
Oh, we're doing separate.
Alright, we got a motion for sixteen, all in favor. Danny Kirkendall.
I'll make the motion to approve seventeen.
I was moving second all in favor, raise your hand.
Yeah.
Alright, nineteen, discuss and take action on resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty-five opposing elimination of countywide polling place program, electronic poll books and electronic ballot marking devices, that'd be my motion.
Good morning.
Lauren.
Lauren, we'll give you a second.
This is a resolution to the court for two reasons, one, to make you aware of what's going on in this legislative session, and then also to make, of course, the citizens of Walker County aware. Um, there are numerous bills already filed this legislative session to eliminate countywide poll places, the electronic poll books and the electronic ballot marking devices. Uh, we fought similar bills last session, um, but we're hoping we can do that again this session. Uh, as you know, we were pressured by the state several years back to, um, replace our antiquated voting equipment. Walker County replaced, purchased electronic ballot marking devices with the latest federally and state certified equipment while maintaining that paper ballot feature that we all wanted. Uh, we also updated all of our electronic poll books that are state certified, streamlining that process and confirming voters have not voted by mail or voted at another polling place on election day. Um, it also, it reduced that, uh, that potential, and in addition, um, it did create, uh, reduced wait times of the poll. A few things I'd like to mention regarding the elimination of countywide poll places. One, fourteen point nine million, eighty-three percent of registered voters in the state of Texas are voting countywide. They're voting in the vote center, like, county. Um, we would be regressing back to precinct based voting. Um, this could lead to the disenfranchisement of the voter. Um, it will require more, more poll places, if we can find them. Um, it's going to require more election workers, if we can find them, we already struggle now, as you know. Um, it's going to require more voting equipment, because it's more poll places. Um, countywide voting is no different from early voting that we do for two weeks in most general elections already. Um, banning this program would force the voters to cast their ballots only in their assigned voting precinct, after years of allowing them, for five years now, to go to any of the vote centers of their choice. Um, so today I just want to ask the court once again, on the resolution to oppose the elimination of countywide poll places and, um, the electronic ballot marking devices along with.
What are they trying to go back to, Don, the old hand count?
Correct, I mean eventually they want all paper ballots.
Well, I'm just gonna call them what they are, they're a bunch of damn idiots, you know?
Well, and I'm assuming these bigger cities want to do that.
No.
No?
It's party based.
Really? Well, which means the bigger cities. Alright, well, you spend a lot of time and money, you spend a lot of time, we spent a lot of money getting where it is now, and I, I don't want to go back.
Well, I can tell you this, that when voters show up on election day at six fifty P M, and they're not in their voting precinct, one, they're not going to get to vote, or two, they're going to vote provisional, it's not going to count. Um, we've really reduced that having, really like, early voting on election day. So we have our one early voting site, but you, everybody gets to go there. So on election day, that countywide really allows voters to go to anyone they want to, doesn't matter. And if they eliminate that, it really could hurt a lot of voters, not just in our county, but across.
Is any of our legislative bunch from our district supporting this mess?
Um, not that I know of, I do know that last session, um, Cassell really helped me really fight the countywide, and I am on a group with the election officials across the state that we're going to fight it as much as we possibly can, because it would just affect too many voters in the state of Texas. So, we're all trying to go to our commissioner's report to get their support, to get the resolution signed in order to go ahead and send that out to all the, the state reps that we have. Um, not just in our county, I'm going to send it out across statewide, but hopefully to get everyone's support of why that would not be a good idea.
Keep fighting.
Yeah.
Alright, I got a motion and a second, other discussion, all in favor raise your hand, motion carries. Number twenty, discuss and take action on repairing the annex elevator, Larry.
Three versus the annex elevator. So we have a problem with our base seals on our hydraulic shaft at the annex elevator. Uh, it is, it is leaking, it's been leaking and it's gotten worse, and now it's gotten to the point where we have to have this worked.
Alright, they're asking for money down, right?
Mm-hmm. Yes, we're asking.
Forty-six, forty-six.
Ninety-two, ninety-three, twenty-eight, big percent, four hundred and fifty percent off.
Fuck the ones that do our.
This is our maintenance, so.
That's not a common practice, but yeah, I'll make a motion. We award it to, uh, what, what is it?
TK.
Thomas and what?
TK.
Yeah, Thomas and, yeah, TKE, uh, Elevator Corporation. Paying, in, forty-six, forty-six, and sixty-four central.
Second.
What'd you cover on? It's forty-six, forty-six, sixty-four, half up front, and then forty-six, forty-six, forty, sixty-four at the end. So for a total of ninety-two, ninety-three, twenty-eight.
Gotcha.
I got a motion, second, correct?
Yes.
Other white, all in favor raise your hand, motion carries. Twenty-one, discuss and take action on quote to rebuild the first floor courthouse entry.
We're finally. Can say, uh, comfortably that our leak is taken care of up there in the front of your flower bed. And it's time to rebuild the entry area there.
And two quotes?
With, we invited three vendors. We invited three vendors, uh, two, two showed up. One that, one that showed, gave a estimate, and one that, the other one that did not show, he had already looked at it, he gave us an estimate. Asking for the, uh, cowboy contractor rebuild cost of fourteen thousand two hundred and fifty project funds.
Aren't these, I mean, you, you've looked at them and they're apples to apples basically, on what they're doing?
Yes, sir, this was a, this is basically apples to apples there. This was a request for proposal, it was so hard to, to, to describe everything that we needed done. So we, we gave them exactly what we were looking for.
Alright, and they put together the package, okay.
Larry, I forgot to ask you, like, we, we talked about, well, when I come over. Well, actually, so was this, this, um, a basement that they're going to do, is that going to have any effect on that out there?
No, sir, no, sir, this is just the cosmetic work at the entry.
Okay. So i- i- inside is not going to have any effect, it'll be two separate things.
Two separate things, okay.
Alright.
So I'll make a motion with second. Order to cowboy contractor for fourteen thousand two hundred and fifty dollars.
Second.
Move second in all in favor, raise your hand, motion carries. Twenty-two, discuss and take action on quote to re-roof annex building.
It is good. We have already received, if I'm not mistaken, we've already received the bill?
Yes.
Yes, we've already received debt for eighty thousand five seventy. Insurance settlement for that one. We had some hail damage this past spring. We had actually, actually had several hail events. It's hard to pin down which one, but we do have a failure in that metal frame as we speak. So, this, um, the proposals that were asked for, were asked for to go on. Give us another twenty-year term system down there. You necessarily need to rip everything off, because the insulation that's underneath is still in good condition. Of the membrane that's there is still in good condition, it'd be a shame if you throw it away and start over so soon after. So, um, the proposal that's in front of you is for a re-roof, just to move over, um, replacing the damaged areas with new material and then roofing over the rest of it, and flash and everything. Uh, the price that J K was asking, which is lowest cost, is ninety-six, nine thirty-five, with the, uh, insurance settlement at eighty-five seventy, that leaves us just under sixty dollar difference.
If we're going business with these folks, we've done business with them, right? I remember the name, I'm not sure if we ever awarded to them.
Yes, sir, they're a, they're a blackboard company.
Okay.
And they're going to leave the, just to root, they're going to leave the bulk of it. And you pull out what?
J K.
Sounds good, that'll start a twenty years overlook.
Yes, that's part of another twenty year, uh, twenty.
And part of it would be double line, right?
Yes, it, the bulk of it would be double line.
What was Kelly's portion, the sixteen?
Sixteen thousand, or sixty-six?
I think we were fifty-six cents.
No, sixteen thousand three sixty-six. I have sixteen three sixty-five written down, but there's change, so.
Sounds good, like, going to pull it out of project funds.
Project funds impossible.
I'm like, that's your motion again. Second.
Moving second in all favor, raise your hand, motion carries.
Thank you, Larry, thank you.
County clerk, discuss and take action on approval of bonds for elected appointed officials sworn in January first, twenty twenty-five to include county court at law judge John Gaines, Sheriff McCray, tax assessor collector Diana McCray, commissioner precinct one Dana Kirkendall, commissioner precinct three Bill Doggett, constable precinct one John Hooks, constable precinct two Shane Loser, constable precinct three Steve Hill, and constable precinct four Gene Barti, that's my motion. Moving second in all in favor raise your hand, motion carries. Twenty-four, discuss and take action on the award of I F B C two three six zero dash two five dash zero zero three upfitting of Chevrolet Tahoe for sheriff's office.
On the.
How are you all this morning? There, we've got several solicitations to discuss. First one, one talking about. We're requesting, uh, once you look at the bids to award this solicitation to, uh, Dana Safety Supply, which is in Somerville. After receiving the bids, there was a, a difference uh, that I, I know in the room we wanted, uh, or the other vendor had bid, uh, but this one was six thousand dollars cheaper for the vehicle. And they are available, uh, daily as well.
Do they have to carry the vehicle too? We ever done business with them?
They ain't got the vehicle yet, but.
Okay.
No, no, sir, we have not done business with Dana, uh, however, the references we checked, um, they do service and they have provided services such as this, and they're very reputable.
Well, that'd be my motion, who are you going with, Dana, Safety Supply?
Yes, sir.
Motion to approve, the Dana Safety Supply.
Moving second in all, favor raise your hand, motion carries. Twenty-five, discuss and take action on terminating without pause solicitation C two three six zero dash two four dash zero zero nine gasoline ultra low diesel fuel.
I'll make that motion.
Moving second, all in favor raise your hand, motion carries. Twenty-six, discuss and take action on issuance of solicitation for gasoline and ultra low diesel fuel.
Motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Moving second in all in favor raise your hand, motion carries. Twenty-seven, discuss and approve the award of request for proposal solicitation C two three six zero dash two five dash zero zero five grant administration service for the disaster recovery allocation program for Texas General Land Office.
It's an R F P for, uh, issuance of, uh, 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 grant, sorry, grant and grant services. For the, uh, petition for grant awards or whatever, anyway, we received two bids for this solicitation. And, uh, Black Gray Gold and Grant Works. And I don't see my Grant Works on here, I'm not quite sure why it got cut off, but Black Gray Gold, um, was deemed non-responsive due to the fact that it had half of the services solicited. And so we, we looked at their proposal anyway, but they scored very low. Grant Works provided everything that was needed and was acceptable in all aspects. So they did receive the highest score, uh, seventy-six fifty after we combined, uh, an average. So I am, uh, making the recommendation to award to Grant Works, uh, for the grant administration services for this.
That'll.
Do we not have a, Grant Works is what's missing out here? What is this, this Langford?
That's the next, that's the next, that's twenty-eight.
That's the next one.
You make a motion.
I did. Moving second in all in favor, raise your hand, motion carries. Twenty-eight, discuss and approve the award of request for proposal solicitation C two three six zero dash two five dash zero zero eight grant administration service for community wild wildfire defense grant program. This is your Langford.
The grant services for, uh, Office of Emergency Management, which is, uh, grants that he has, um, applied for, and this is for the grant of the emergency, along with the one that, uh, they have evaluated them and have found them to be, uh, acceptable as well.
That'll, that'll be my motion to award it to Langford.
Second.
Moving second in all, favor raise your hand, carry, thank you. Twenty-nine, discuss and take action on twenty twenty-five I R S mileage rate increase to seventy cents. That'll be my motion. Moving second in all in favor, raise your hand, motion carries. Thirty, discuss and take action on updating per diem to reflect the current G S A rates. I put this on here, we're at thirty-five dollars a day. Where we called is anywhere from fifty to eighty dollars. So, I'd like to adjust our person something better than thirty-five bucks.
That's fair, you got a recommendation?
I, I don't, I don't file for per diem, so.
I don't either, I don't know what it would be.
I don't, I don't want to jump to eighty, but if we go to fifty-ish, I'm good with that.
Usually it's around, yeah, fifty or sixty.
So, I'm, I'll make the motion to increase the per diem to fifty dollars per.
Second.
Moving second in all in favor, raise your hand, motion carries, thank you. Thirty-one, discuss and take action on child protective service board applications. We had another one come in, and her name is. Help me with that, Ally.
Yes, Sienna.
Yes, Sienna, so that'd be my motion.
Are we going to shut them off at some point, tell them, or we just going to keep?
Yes, um, well, we're capped at fifteen, we're still trying to get some diversification on the board.
Okay.
To cover everybody, um.
Just like number eight, right?
Yeah. So we're still waiting on background checks from the other ones, so that's my motion.
Second.
Moving second in all, favor raise your hand, motion carries. Thirty-two, discuss and take action on purchase of a semi truck for precinct one from budgeted funds.
Kind of looking at, uh, buying us a belly dump, so, uh, starting with, um, I'd like to, uh, forward, um, twenty thousand. Something goes wrong with twenty-five, so motion's going to be to, uh, move forward with this, that budgeted funds, no more than twenty-five bucks.
Um.
Yeah, yeah, individual.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, it's company, it's, it's not an individual, it's a company.
Basically, we were asking about that.
But, yeah. But I'd still be less than twenty-five, but it's an asset, we have from the court. That's my motion.
Second.
Moving second in all, favor raise your hand, motion carries. Thirty-three, discuss and take action to authorize county judge or other authorized officials to execute the settlement participation and release forms regarding settlement offers from Krogers in the matter of Texas opioid multi-district litigation for the county in the matter of Texas opioid litigation in the hundred and fifty-second district court of Harris County, Texas. Case number twenty eighteen dash six three five eight seven, we're going to go into executive session under five five one point oh seven one.
Okay.
A minimum of one percent cross slope, and so. Um, I don't have any strong objections to the one percent cross slope, I do think if, if the. I do think if, if the contractor were to meet that two percent cross slope, it would have provided a better product. Um, I think coupling the minimum one percent with some grinding can probably achieve that, that positive drainage that's required, but I I would recommend that if the court, um, permits it, that it would be something that is monitored over the one year maintenance period and not, um, approved at this point. I, I think it's something that needs to be monitored and sure we do have that positive drainage.
So instead of, I think what she's saying is instead of approving the variance outright today, that we, we would, or can offer no objection to the solution being attempted and then we could monitor it over.
Mike, I have several, couple of questions, I think, that, that both engineers are on point. You look at it again at the year mark, but when you're talking about grinding this, you're talking about from centerline all the way to the curb? Are we talking about a little old bitty, uh, little gutter? Wh- what's your idea of grinding? Explain to, explain to me in the court what we're gonna do in layman's terms.
Basically shave off what we believe is extra concrete that was poured at the gutter line that, um, so your pavement slope would have been.
Ask and scroll up to the pictures, please.
Actually, yeah, if I can explain it from this, uh, easier, so your pavement slope is this two percent.
Yeah, there's.
Picture, picture.
There you go.
There you go.
So the grinding, uh, in our opinion, needs to begin somewhere closer where the ponding is occurring and then grind down towards the gutter line where we believe when they're pouring the concrete, they usually have the trucks off to the side with their shoots. Believe they put more than they should have over here, which affects the, the two percent slope that you're, you're specifying in, in your. So they would basically start shaving this down to get to the gutter line where it should have been and continue that proper slope.
Other than not where the water's, oh, you're talking about in, and.
In the gutter line.
Scroll, scroll down a little further. Look, keep going. There's a good picture down here. All right, stop right there. So what's your plan? What, explain to me how you're gonna fix that.
So we, we get closer to the gutter line, grind it to go so that gutter line's a little bit lower than where it is right now, which this water then will make it to the gutter line and then it can start flowing that way.
So you're talking about five or six foot from the pony that.
Correct, this, this is what we believe needs to be.
It's not just gonna, you're not going around just a little trough.
No, I believe the contractor's supposed to put in here about how far off.
And he says three inch.
That's what I read somewhere was three.
Within three inches of the curb.
Yeah.
So we believe the, or the contractor believes that the problem is about three inches from the gutter lines to start grinding from.
So the red line over to the curb. Kinda deal.
Correct.
So you're only gonna grind three inches?
That's what the proposed solution is right now.
Was the.
That three inches, you're gonna create a three inch trough down that gutter line?
No, no.
Oh, you're just gonna shave it till it matches the gutter line, right?
I think he thinks it's doing this, think the street's coming down, then kinda goes up to the gutter up here. Now the street. Yeah, so they're gonna, and the gutter, gutter's down here, they're gonna come through here and grind this like this, this is your three inches right here, they're gonna grind, let's not water get into this gutter and then go down.
We believe it's doing something.
That's what you think it's gonna. Was the, um.
Six inches on the concrete?
There was, there was more.
Six to seven.
From our, our, uh, field inspector and our construction manager, when they saw the pouring operation, they believe there's already well more than six inches in the concrete to begin with, because they saw the marks.
The idea, the idea of, um, understanding your picture and your conversation is to maintain a uniform slope to the curb line, about to have a ditch.
Okay. That's something. Yeah, it's, it's not gonna, it's gonna be a uniform. We're not gonna have a trench there that's gonna fill up with something and have the same problem.
And, and this ponding is not caused from subboards.
From subgrade filler?
No, it was.
Okay, but again, the subgrade filler is something that could happen in, while also my letter, like Stephanie said, I would also uh, advise that this is just monitored through the one year, because if there's cracking, then possibly we have pavement failures as well and that needs to be addressed.
So what kind of, what kind of surface are you gonna have on the grinding? Is it gonna be? I mean, like, it's not gonna be smooth, obviously.
No, it, it doesn't look as pretty as like the broom finish, um, that it would have looked for a brand new pavement, but it's just, it, you know, it just looks like you grinded that surface down. The appearance is not ideal either.
But it won't be slick.
Correct.
So what are you looking for today from us, Brandon?
That's true, well, they're looking for. I think, I think the recommendation that Stephanie gave, or I reckon administratively would be our thing as well, is court wants to, um, not, not object to them attempting the solution uh, with a twelve month monitor, monitoring period and then the solution would be reviewed by engineering and, and inspectors over the next twelve months.
Yeah, cuz if you give them approval for the variance today, then you're gonna be accepting liability at the sub basis.
Then we could come back and do, could, when we, when we get to the ads of the lands and you could do a variance event. If you're happy with, if the, if the, here's the solution's been working, and if they, they believe the, the solution's been working.
Yeah, we're giving them approval today to move forward. Try it and we're gonna monitor it and come back in twelve month and make sure it's okay. That's my motion.
I'll give him a second.
Boom, say it all, favorite is your hand. Motion case. We're gonna go back to. Thirty-four?
All right, so, uh, there are four, uh, parts of this variant request. But the width ratio.
Yo, you need one of these?
Thank you.
How many of these are out?
On the depth of it? Losers.
Just agree that's in the, in the thing. But those are cul-de-sac, right?
Yeah.
All cul-de-sac. Cul-de-sac, right?
Cul-de-sac, but even cul-de-sac, we've got the bridge ready based on a formula with.
So and then the one lot, number fourteen is over. It's over about three point seven, right? Is that, am I reading that right?
Yes.
I don't have a problem with that. At all.
I did the table just so you guys could see the average.
We're going four on that last one we did.
Anything under four, I'm pretty much okay.
Yeah, these are large.
Yeah, large, large. Yeah. Yep.
So the second part of the rant is, uh, to use a twenty foot current, pack three curve gutter, uh, road cross section. Essentially, they're requesting to use the same road cross section that they've been using in the previous section to extend. Um, that's tied also with, uh, number three, they want to extend anything that ended in street. Um, if you go back and look under their original variance, I believe that they were talking about twenty lots at the time. Even with the extension, I think they'll still remain below or at the twenty lots. Right? Or what count?
Are we leaving the existing cul-de-sac that's there?
Yes, tying into.
They're gonna tie into the backend of that.
Like, what's, be on the ground, we're gonna leave it there?
So that's, that's, that's the nuts and bolts of that, if they're asking to use that cross section and also extend. Totally.
I'm gonna ask the question, cuz I, to make sure I know what I know. On number two, we've already, the whole thing is already twenty-eight foot, right? We're just extending it.
We actually have twenty-six at the skinny part going into the community because that was red side ditch. Uh, that's twenty-six back to back and then we transitioned that to the twenty-eight back to back.
The curving gutter sections are, are, and they're opposing.
And that's what's on our field, local rule, twenty-six foot.
Yeah, it's fixed for rural roads with open ditch. We're doing an urban road cross section with curb gutters, so it requires the variance.
Okay, so that's what we have to do the variance before.
We do, yeah, you guys have the variance.
We can see it, you got more than four lots you've already.
Uh, it's based on, uh, it's based on lot runages, but it's also based on anytime you have a curving gutter street is. Um, and then the fourth, uh, part of it is, um, the permit of private, so it's a religion, private, privately made in roads, uh, which is a variance to the, uh, right now. Yeah.
Do you have a problem on these?
The two that you received engineering opinions on or reviews on were request number two and three, the other two were. Uh, regulatory.
Yeah, I don't have any of these.
Do you have a problem? No, I just would say that you might wanna place a, some sort of a timeline on the variance is, is.
Yeah, we only, what are we doing on the last ever? What are y'all looking for on timeline?
I think where we started with one to where we are right now.
Yeah.
Eighteen months maybe.
Yeah.
We're designing, constructing.
We did, yeah, if we did twenty-four months.
That would be enough, say, should be safe.
Yeah, twenty-four months.
Y'all good with that?
Yes.
They moved to approve.
I wouldn't even object if you guys wanted to wonder that, it's just good to have a timeline. In thirty-six, that's fine with me.
So mostly gonna be approved of all four variance requests uh, for a timeline of three years.
I'll second that.
Move and say it all, favorite is your hand. Motion case.
We're gonna watch, dunker go this time.
Watch that, I need this, that's extra.
They were watching.
Thank you, Wes.
All right, number thirty-seven, discuss Walker County subdivision regulation policy.
Um, better request, uh, for a little workshop. Brandon.
Yeah, I wanted to get a feeling of four, uh, legally we can set backs from side property lines. Watching everyone lose, um, I just wanna get a feel of where the court was gonna be to set back, we have twenty-five foot on.
This is just, I'm just giving you a city of Huntsville, we have twenty-five foot right away, from the right away line right now on the front of the lot, but we have no.
Nothing on the sides.
In our code.
So I didn't get this from the city in Waverly, uh, the city in Waverly is fifteen foot from the side, from the not commercial, but from residential from the edge of the house to the property line is, uh, fifteen foot on either side.
That one that you guys have, that city of Huntsville, so they're not, they're not exactly identical. And, and, and different jurisdictions are in different places on this. Some have very fairly complex systems of determination, I'll be honest with you.
When you say edge of the, uh, house, I mean, is that the roof edge or you talking about the?
So, so typical, subdivision level is the side building setback line that's plotted on as part of the plat. We don't really get into the, uh, at the time that, that's the house, we don't, we don't have a building inspector, so we don't measure um, at build line, it would be, uh, on the plat, it would be reported as a setback. Um, you know, some of the benefits are, you know, take fire, obviously, uh, a lot of those setbacks come from fire codes and that kinda stuff or safety and ingress and egress and being able to get to, some drainage benefits to having that space between structures to run drainage or correct drainage. Um, it's never been something that we've had in the policy, if the court wishes to put it in the policy, then the, the next question would be um, if we add that to the policy, is it something that you would like uh, us to enforce at the permitting? Right, right now, when somebody applies for permits, we, we don't check reasons and all that kind of stuff. We, we do a look at it, but we don't, we're not there, we're not their site surveyor, we're not their builder. Um, so is, if there's the, we don't add it to the regime of looks at the permitting level and then they build too close to a, a line, um, is that something that we're supposed to look at when those when those individual permits come in? Or, or not, you just wanna put it in place and it's there and enforceable and everybody's on notice and you're not looking for that level.
Do you have any recommendations?
Sure.
You got any recommendation on setbacks on the sides?
And just, just make sure, I think everybody knows this, today is just workshops. Yeah.
Well, usually it's from the yeah, from the slab?
From the slab.
Normally they're from the slab, yeah.
I got correct.
Oh, I just wanted, I thought it from the building, the, from the, cause you're overhanging.
They're really looking for permanent structure, which is the slab, but the overhang doesn't, the overhang, I know for a fact that we had why you have the overhang over the building?
A lot of jurisdiction.
I thought it was a little way through this one.
Yeah, that's why I asked, cuz I don't know for sure, but, you know, you look at some of these places that they're building down, you can step from rooftop to rooftop.
Uh, this, um, just aware of me, I think you are, some developers, we don't, we don't prohibit building setback lines, some developers are add side building setback lines on their own. Because they're gonna sell lots and they wanna deal with that issue, it probably keeps people away from those property lines. Getting really close or over them. Back.
What effect is it gonna have on your size of lots?
You guys are at an eighty foot.
We're at eighty right now.
Now, minimal frontage, so.
You'd be all right.
Can't, I mean, depending on where you guys end up on the side buildings that might line it, it still leaves a pretty.
Well, I mean, it gets to where you're dictating what square footage of a house you can put on there, basically.
You have to build it longer, you know?
And then you get to.
We can always go up to five acre small lots and be done with.
Yeah.
Driveway can be over typically.
Yeah.
There'd be a yaw obviously, but.
Yeah.
And we're at a, you guys currently have an eighty foot minimum privilege, even on urban section, so. Yeah. That still leaves a sixty foot, um, minimum.
Minimum.
Uh, opening between the build lines.
If you go ten feet.
If you went ten foot, if you went a full ten foot, or if you went fifteen, at least fifty, you know, just five.
I'd say the, the fifteen or twenty would be five. Or twenty-five.
Well, that's what I'm getting at, you know, with, with eighty foot, then you're gonna be stipulating how big a house you can put in it for the most part. You know?
You can always build a bigger lot.
Yeah, yeah, five acres.
I mean, ultimately, the property line itself, I mean, what can be built?
Yeah.
This is just.
Setback.
I mean, you have to look at what, you know, what do you, rather than just arbitrarily saying you wanna put a setback, you have to wonder what problem are you trying to solve? If there's not really a problem, is.
We can only do it based on health and safety.
Yeah, that's about it, cuz in congested areas like in the cities where you have entire neighborhoods of houses together, you know, the roofs run together and water joins and causes, so you spread them out a little bit, gives a little bit of green space for it to capture the rain and stuff like that. Is that an issue in the county? It's, I don't know if it is or not, I'm not saying yes or no, I just don't know if it is, I haven't anybody ever asked me.
Depends on the subdivision they're building.
Yeah.
You know, that's, I think it's what it all ties back to.
The, the developers can always use a bigger lot than eighty foot too, I mean, they'll have to stand with the, whatever the policy is. No, they won't, you know, forty's, you know, I mean, they want it down to thirties, well, they can just
Yeah, stack them in.
Stack them in there, but that's not kinda what I like, you know, I'll be honest with you, five acres are good.
So I ain't had.
We still supposed to be rural around here.
I'm gonna proceed forward with this, at least those some members of the court. Well, we can put additional information together, uh, they internalized the workshop, perhaps, or see what the interest were, where we put a lot of effort, uh, time into doing the research on the sub division setback line. We can do that. Is there anything else the court wants us to look into?
What were you gonna say, Diego?
Have to be careful when you look at the look at that, cuz we're looking at the rural urban interface, not just rural or, you know, we're kinda in that middle area where, where you look at everything that's burning right now on the TV, it's, it's scary.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah.
I got, I got it.
Like, farm into, have enough room, space to go from house to house with their hose and stuff like, it's all of this. All that in those codes. But I agree.
I, I got, if we're gonna just look for discussion topics, I had a couple, one, we, we, we grant variances pretty regularly on up to four to one. I would like to see us move from three to one to four to one on the, um, subdivisions, like, very few people come in with three to one, um, they come like today, three seventy-five, three, three nine, four. And if you you design it, if you, if you move to four to one, you can kinda draw a line in the dirt on that, but once you start varying. If you design it, if you if you move to four to one, you can kind of draw a line in the dirt on that, but once you start variance in above the three, there's. A lot of wood. Well, you can do three point nine. Why can't you do four point two or something like that? So I'd like to see us discuss moving to four to one and then.
Has pretty regularly uh branded, I mean, minimal, not across the board variances, but but they granted many variances, especially when. They were uh legal some.
And I and I tell developers when they call me about that, I'm like, if you get above four, you're gonna get pushback, but if you get if you're four or less, historically, we've been pretty old. So I'd like to see us look at that. And then on some of our tracks, correct me if I'm wrong, it's like somebody has attracted property. I think our current. Um rule as far as placing like mobile houses, it's two more, two or more on a lot rental.
That's that's actually defined. I mean, that's that we can't do that. That's in the manufactured housing real community policy.
Yeah.
But then we tie to that basically in our code for RV parks and. Uh uh multi, you know, cabin like developments or those kinds of things. So we got that two right now. That two or more, anything beyond a single home offered for rent now.
Right.
We have plenty of properties where we have multiple structures, like, you know, several family members in the owner of property or those kinds of things, but.
Right.
If it uh if it's rented, then yes, it triggers compliance with the manufacturing house.
But we don't. We don't police that as far as a guy who has property and he puts three traders on us, his mom, pop and. Cousin Joe, they're gonna live in these. You know, we don't go and survey.
We don't every twelve months go knock doors.
Say, are you? Are you really mom? You know, we don't.
They at the time of permitting, they sign a a document uh that says that they're aware and so on and so forth, but we don't. As a standard go. Now, if we get a if we get a report on a property from a journey neighbor or something like that, says, hey, there's a few running out here and. You know, I thought y'all had a code and then we might go out and. Property and talk at that.
A lot of those.
I don't have guys in my office who are on regular routes going around.
Hey, I hope we don't ever get to that.
No, we don't want to. We don't want to.
That sounds like, you know, a Gestapo kind of.
Yeah, so um I I I like the conversation maybe to allow up to two. Um I don't think I've seen a lot of four or five, you know, tracks without basically calling it a mobile home park. But I think if we could do, cuz right now you have one that you can rent. If you'd like to see you do a second one, now it's a mobile home subdivision and all kinds of stuff jumps in. But with the with the with the cost of property today and a lot of people have room to put to and. Whether they can put to or not is governed by a lot of things. Number one, being deceptive. Number one, can they make it fit? And if we can do that, I think that would help some of our. There's a lot of people in town looking for a place to put a manufactured home and um. And and rent them out. I think that would be something that wouldn't really. I don't think it's gonna harm communities. I think a lot of people are probably already doing it. I like to see us move away from. Two or more to two on then make it more more than two. More than two qualifies as a mobile home park or RV park subdivision, so I don't know where y'all are at on that, but.
Yeah, I would have to bring.
I'd be fine with that.
I'd have to bring that back both. I would assume you want that across the board.
Yeah.
Depending on if it's a manufactured home or not. So we bring that back is both under the mobile park policy, but also under the manufacturing house.
Yeah. Yeah, I think that we get some pretty positive feedback.
Okay. If you got some information on that.
I think maybe I know I got a list somewhere of things I wanna check, but I think those are my two high points right there. So.
Out by roads.
Just five acres or more, Andy.
Yeah.
You get my vote on it.
I I think at some point. Um and now that we're discussing maybe the jumping off point, where we start discussing our road policy here. At at the counter, but what message are we gonna put out to developers as far as when they when they bring this subdivision? And offer growth for acceptance, what's our policy gonna be forward? No, we're. Uh I used to be the writing a check, cash. I think as we're writing a loan, we can't pay where we're taking these roads in a year forty something and you picking up twelve or fifteen pretty soon. Um we can't for take care of those. There's not a lot of options for funding. From the developer other than building them and letting us have it and say, hey, good luck to you. We're so I I I think we need to talk about several things. Idea of. Offering a concrete road in place of a hot mixed road for consideration to be accepted is is one thing. Um putting uh looking at our policy and saying if you if you choose to build a hot mixed road and a hot mixed asphalt road in the future. Um this court is. Uh we can't say we're not cuz we can't commit a future court, but we can say that the county, we we're not accepting asphalt roads of any kind, you know.
I I wouldn't have a problem with that.
So that but I think the important part is to get the word out to the contractors out there and um. And just kind of if if we think we're going that way and we're gonna put something together, I think we do like we did when we did the big revision of the subdivision regulations. We get that conversation out there. I mean, if I asked you about it, what would you say? Y'all just built a concrete road subdivision over there. Hope you don't mind me calling.
An audience that will be able to afford eighty foot lots in concrete streets of.
At this time.
At this time.
Right.
Ten years from now?
Yeah. So you it would encourage smaller lot, it would take smaller lot subdivisions to make that happen or keep it asphalt to keep the road private. So that's a decision that I think that we have to make.
One of the things if you're interested in this, if you want us to do some research, we could do some research on for the differential. Uh between what our current standard is and. Same.
And I I've talked to a developer about that and he was he was gonna look up some prices for a subdivision. He was looking at doing kind of getting that math. Together cuz we talk about, you know, just cuz it's concrete doesn't necessarily mean curbing gutter. You can have a concrete road with ditches on each side of it.
Yes. Well, they have a portion of their project is partially.
Yeah.
I know, I guess two comments. I know the last subdivision we had put in was private and the man told me that if he done another one, it would be.
Yeah.
Because of the cost and the and the ongoing expense, of course, it's private. And I'll tell you this, God, what country is. In my precinct for a long time and it's been a county road for probably close to twenty years now and I have spent zero.
Touch today.
But it's concrete.
Concrete.
And that's kind of where we need to be heading with this.
Zero.
Yeah.
Probably your best road.
Absolutely. One of my best. I don't know. After after doing that overlay, I hope the other one.
I hear you.
I'm spending all that money on that overlay, but hands down, of course, it's old concrete, you know, uh but but from the time they built it, they have never spent any money.
Yeah.
So.
Alright, there's some talking points, Brian.
We'll bring it. We'll bring it back.
Anybody anything else?
Nope.
It's me.
Yep, little comments. Questions from media, permission's court.